We're going to call the meeting to order. Chief Kramer, it's good to see you. Welcome. Would everyone please join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with the redeemed and justice
May we have a roll call, Lynda?
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Here.
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Agenda review. Any changes to the agenda? None? How about conflicts of interest? Anything? Okay. Thank you. Paul, we have something different going on this evening. Most of you might notice that we have a video camera in the back and we have one up here on stage. Would you like to share with everyone what we're doing?
Yeah, we're trying something new tonight. For the first time, the Cloverdale City Council meetings are going to be videotaped. Mr. Alan Fitch is the videographer. And the program is that the whole council meetings will be videotaped. And then, within two days, our goal is to have it posted on the city's YouTube channel. So you'll be able to view it. I think some of you might know Alan's work. Alan did the candidates' nights at the last municipal election. And also did the video production on the candidate interviews. So I was so impressed by his work that we brought him back. And so, everybody, remember you're on camera tonight, so smile.
Thank you, Paul. Alan, thank you. Next is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that are not on today's agenda may do so. When you come up to the podium, please sign in. There's a green little pad there. State your name for the records and tell us what you have to say.
Hi, councilmembers. My name is Shirley Davis. And I'm here to request that you do, you put the smoking ordinance on the next agenda, please, just as a report out as to what the progress has been made, because it was done in March. A subcommittee was assigned and we haven't seen anything yet, so I'm just curious. I talked with Ellen Swedberg and she said we have until December to have it all completed before they come out again, I guess, and do another evaluation. So I don't want to get an F. Especially with the marijuana thing is coming up too, that we need to have that.
Well Shirley, it is on our agenda and on our work list and we're working as quickly as we can on it.
Okay.
Paul, would you like to maybe give an update?
Yeah, the issue, we've had to reassign that project. Recently, as about two weeks ago, reassigned it to the city attorney's office. And I gave direction today that the tobacco ordinance was, of all the issue, many projects that city attorney has to work on, tobacco ordinance is a high priority.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And Shirley, our goal is to have it done by the end of the year as well.
Yeah, okay. And she said she was going to talk to David Kelly. Does she call you? No? Okay.
Thank you, Shirley.
She might. Okay.
Anyone else? Tony, welcome to Cloverdale.
Love coming to Cloverdale. Well, good evening, mayor, city council members. It's a pleasure speaking in front of you this evening. I'm here representing the board of directors of the Sonoma County Fair. I'd like to give you an update of what we have planned with the Sonoma County Fair, which begins in nine days. It's our 81st Sonoma County Fair. The theme of this year's fair is holidays, so we'll be celebrating different holidays throughout the fair, such as St. Patrick's Day, Valentine's Day, Halloween, Thanksgiving, Earth Day, among 11 of them. It's, yeah, it's nine days from today. Going back to the holidays, one of my favorites that I'm really eagerly looking forward to is on Valentine's Day. If you're so inclined to get married or renew your wedding vows, well, you can do it on the giant Ferris wheel and Senator McGuire will be officiating the ceremony. So it's, that's going to be something really special. For the first time in six years, we have horse racing on the opening day, which I don't know if I said, opening day is next Thursday, the 3rd, and the fair extends through the 13th. And then we also have three days of what we call the bonus horse racing after the fair. That's the 18th, 19th, and 20th. With opening day, we normally have Hat Day on a Saturday, but we're going to have Hat Day on Thursday to make it that much special. And also, that happens to be Easter. So if you don't feel like wearing your Kentucky Derby-style hat, you can wear your Easter bonnet on Hat Day. So it's, opening day is going to be really special. Something new at the track, we've got railside tables, seating right next to the finish line. We continue to have our ever-popular Derby Dog Dash, which will be the two Sundays, the 6th and 13th. The Hall of Flowers, I took a look yesterday. It's absolutely, it's going to be gorgeous. The theme, Holidays in Bloom. We're going to be celebrating the many holidays and seasons throughout the year. And we do have the Hall of Flowers preview this coming Wednesday, a week from tomorrow, with the proceeds benefiting the youth ag scholarship fund. We've got a new carnival company this year, which, from what I understand, they're going to have the latest stomach-turning popular rides at the fair. Free concerts, just like last year, no more extra fee to see a concert in the Crispback Arena at the community stage. We have free concerts from Marshall Tucker Band, Lorna Elena, War, Trent Harmon. From what I understand, the, one of the most renowned Beatles tribute bands, I'm sorry, Eagles tribute bands will be at the fair as well. Plenty of awesome food, just like at your Cloverdale Fair, love Cloverdale Citrus Fair. Lobster corn dogs, Krispy Kreme cheeseburgers. We'll have our Iboh Loz Pasta Palace there, usual stuff. And destruction derby, monster truck show, the rodeo. And want to definitely bring the attention of our elected official, Senator Cloverdale, City of Cloverdale Day will be Friday, August 4th. So that's a week from this Friday. The second race will be named the City of Cloverdale Day, City of Cloverdale Race. And it's approximately race post times 2:45. And I understand staff should have received some documents that will help you further enjoy the fair. We'd love to see you there at the fair, especially on City of Cloverdale Day. We'd love to have you in the winner's circle for race two. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Anyone else wishing to address the city council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. And the first is, the first item is the proclamations and presentations. And this is always an exciting time when we have two first responders coming forward and welcoming them to the city. So Officer Kevin Burt and dispatcher Michael Newhall, if you want to come down. And I believe, Paul, we're going to do it up on the stage?
Well, we're, the plan is that Chief Parker is going to give dispatcher Newhall and Officer Burt the oath up here on the stage. So if you guys can come on down here and come up the stairs and come up on the stage, it will-
Just be careful, it's kind of tight there.
And then, when that's done, both gentlemen will step down in the audience. And I think your dispatcher Newhall's wife is here to pin his badge on and Officer Burt is, mother's here to pin the badge.
Good. I'll give you a quick bio on each of these wonderful gentlemen. Kevin Burt, I had them write their own bios, by the way, and you'll see there. If I pause, you'll get the clue. So Kevin Burt, he's 25 years old, born and raised in Lakeport. Growing up, Kevin played sports, it was his football track at Clear Lake High. After high school, Kevin went to earn on his, went to earn an associate's degree from Mendocino College before transferring to Chico State. We earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Kevin went on to sponsor himself to the Butte Police Academy where he finished seventh in his class. Kevin applied with the Cloverdale Police Department in 2016 and underwent a rigorous selection process before being welcomed to the team. Kevin would like to thank his parents, his sister, for their support and like to thank Chief Kramer, who is here today, for giving him this opportunity to protect and serve this community. That's Officer Kevin Burt. Michael Newhall, Public Safety Dispatcher. Michael brings with him military experience, including a deployment to Iraq, life experience and college degrees in criminal justice and business management. Michael grew up in Guadalajara, who I learned, which was a population of 565. And graduated his high school probably about two. At Point Arena. He and his lovely wife of eight years, Amanda Newhall, who is here today, are both dedicated their lives to public service. As Amanda is a fire engineer for the city of Cloverdale, Michael and Amanda brought their, bought their first home in Cloverdale in 2014 and enjoy spending their time off with their two Boston Terriers at the dog park near Lake Sonoma.
I state your name.
I am Eric.
Do you solemnly affirm?
Do you solemnly affirm?
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend.
-the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of California-
And the state of California.
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States-
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of California-
And the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation-
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well-
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties-
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Your pleasure.
Well, on behalf of the city council and the city of Cloverdale, we sure are fortunate to have these two young men joining the city staff. So, thank you, gentlemen. So enjoy some pictures with your family in the pinning and we'll sit silent while you do that. The next item on the, the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that any particular item be pulled and discussed separately. Any items to be pulled?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Seconded by Russell. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Communications? Anything this evening, Paul?
No, sir.
Thank you. Public hearing. The first item is to establish an update, updating the fee schedule for charges for city services. And this item is, Joanne?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Walter, councilmembers. Tonight's public hearing is to review the city's schedule of rates and fees and also to take public comment. The city's rates and fees are based on the cost to provide the service. This year, employees received a cost of living adjustment, which is why we felt that it was necessary to review the schedule of rates and fees to make sure that our costs are covered. The finance department also met with the employees to review the hours that we show for the various tasks on the schedule. So some fees actually went down this year and some fees actually went up. This year, we also met with David Kelly, Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, and also City Engineer, Public Works Director, Mark Rincon, to review the fees that were associated with engineering and planning department tasks. Some of those were duplicated on the schedule, so we did combine some of those into one fee to make it a little less confusing for staff to know what exactly they should charge for a particular service. Other than that, I don't have any other comments, but I'd be happy to take comments and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Joanne. Councilmembers, before I open the public comment, anything?
Fine, that is all.
I've got it. In the future, I'd really appreciate it if we could show what the current fees were versus what the proposed. That would, side by side, it would make it really easy to see if they're going up or down. This is really hard because I was looking at them. I just had a couple of questions on the appeals. I noticed that we have two types of appeals. I guess the fee amount is what I wanted to talk about. I know we talked a little bit about this in the past, I think it was last year or the last time we did the fee. And I see if a citizen goes before the planning commission, they want to bring a project into the city and for whatever reason it's denied. Could you explain what type of fee they would, if they wanted to appeal that to the city council to hear it and to determine whether or not, you know, they'll basically approve the project? If I'm reading this right, there's a fee they would have to pay just to put it on the council agenda?
That's correct. And the reason for that is that we have to publish a notice in the newspaper, which is $150 cost. And we also have to mail notice to people that live within a certain area of the property that's involved in the appeal. So the $220 fee is just to cover the costs of the public hearing and the staff effort and the postage to mail the notices.
So, but what's the $725 fee I'm reading here?
And what category is that in?
Under the appeals on page 138, I think it is, there you have the, there's two appeals. One is appeal, if fee-based application has been filed and paid, and appeals if application is city-initiated. And that's the 220 versus the 700. So city-initiated appeal would be the 220, if I'm reading it right. Do you see it's a-
I see, and I'm trying to find it on this one, too.
It's on page 138, Joanne, about the third-
So what, what we're showing for that $725 fee is the $150 public hearing notice publication, an hour and a half staff time for the associate planner, and three hours of staff time for the community development director. And those three things total $724.50.
Well, I raise it because it concerns me that we discourage maybe people that may have what they feel a need to bring it forward from doing that based on the monetary amount. So that's one concern I just want to share. The, I was questioning, I had a question on the CEQA addendum, fee of $10,310. How does that amount? I mean, that's a big number. And CEQA is usually required of any project that comes in that may have an impact. Maybe you could just explain that? That's on the page 138 as well.
Right. That fee is based on the $150 public hearing notice, 25 hours of the associate planner, 15 hours for the community development director, and 40 hours, oh, I'm sorry, 15 hours as city engineer, and 40 hours for the community development director. And David may be able to explain a little bit more why it's so time-consuming to process a CEQA addendum to an EIR.
Absolutely. As Joanne indicated, that was staff's assessment of the amount of hours that it would take to process an EIR. The process for an addendum, probably the most recent example is where the council approved an addendum by way of a mitigated negative declaration for the Alexander Valley Resort specific plan. Often, we're going to retain consulting firms to assist us with, with that effort. It's, it's usually quite involved because there's a significant amount of environmental analysis that has to be revised, updated, recirculated to the public, responded to any comments that are, that are prepared, you know, sent to the state clearinghouse. So it's, the cost is really an assessment of the amount of hours that staff's going to spend undertaking that effort to revise and update the, the EIR. And again, an EIR often contains multiple sections of analysis for different environmental topics ranging from land use, transportation, water quality, biological resources. And so, you know, we kind of look at that as a, as a kind of a midpoint in terms of the amount of time it's going to be required to, to update and making an addendum to, to an EIR. But it's, it's really part of the process that we're obligated to follow when we, when we make an amendment or prepare an addendum to an EIR. It can be pretty, pretty extensive. It's a lot of environmental documentation.
Thank you.
I think, and if I, if I, if I can, Vice Mayor Paula also addressed your comment about the appeals. I think council had provided some direction to staff that if there was an appealing that had a reason to bring forward an appeal to council, that staff would advise them that they could make a request to have council otherwise reduce the appeal fee if, if the council decides to grant the, grant the appeal based on the merit of that appeal. So we would certainly advise anybody who wanted to file an appeal that, you know, the fee is there, they should pay it, but that they could request as part of their filing of the appeal of some portion or all of the, the appeal fee be refunded by council.
Thank you. Just one more question. On page 140, we talk about a tentative map, major, a tentative map, minor, and then we talk about a final parcel map. And substantial fees are attached to those. Are those one or are there one and then another fee for the final? So the tentative major, so we're talking $10,000-plus dollars for a tentative major and then another, what is that, about $8,000 for the final? So, or $10,000, whatever.
Those are indeed separate fees. We, for example, with a tentative map, that, that usually entails bringing a subdivision map through the process, starting with the planning commission for review and approval and the, you know, extensive review process that's associated with review of that development project. Just for clarification, the difference between a minor tentative map and a major tentative map is the number of lots. Really, the minor tentative map relates to a parcel map, so four parcels or less. So there's less time involved in processing that than a major tentative map, which can involve a number of proposed lots that are being created. Once, and assuming that that map gets approved by the commission, there's a final map process that the developer will decide to undertake. There are, there are tentative maps, for example, that are out there that haven't been through the final process, which entails submittal of the requisite improvement plans, the easements, all the documents that go along with basically recordation of that map so that those lots are actually formally created and recorded with the county recorder. And so, it's usually not quite as extensive of a review process as the tentative process, but that final process does entail a fair amount of staff time, particularly on the, from public works and engineering side, to ensure that, you know, all the legal descriptions for those maps are accurate, that, you know, any rights of way, any easements, et cetera, are all properly described. So there's a, there's usually a review process to ensure that all those legal documents are in such a form and manner that they can be, be recorded with the county clerk recorder. Ultimately, we bring that to council for final approval at that point to, of a final map. But at that point, it's went through the tentative map process. It's, you know, it's kind of, you know, looking at ensuring that all of the zoning requirements are met, that the design requirements are met, and, you know, all of the other cities' municipal code requirements are met as part of that initial review process.
So, one of the things we've been trying to get is more housing for people that are looking to, you know, places to live, places to rent, affordable housing. And one of the things, if I'm reading it right, if somebody wanted to do a major project, it's $10,800 of fees minimum. It may be more. And then the final map would be another $10,000-plus dollars. So 20, almost $21,000 before they do anything. Is that kind of what I'm reading? Does that sound right?
That would be, that would, that would be accurate description of the cost of the fees.
So my question would be, is there a way that we could allow them to finance those fees? Or is this something they have to write a check before they could proceed? Could these be worked into a project? I mean, it's a lot of money for a small business person that's trying to come into a city to build four rental units, which we have a need for in our city, or 10, you know, an apartment complex of some sort. And I guess my question is, is there a way that we have built into this structure that we can work with people so that make the project pencil out and get them moving?
The issue of project financing is usually kind of a separate topic other than our fees. This, this really sets forth the, the cost of providing that service. Often, what we try to do is engage in conversations, much like we, we did today, Vice Mayor Paul, with a, with a developer who is interested in processing a final map about the economics of the project and how to make it work. Sometimes, the economics of a project have more to do with overall market economics, the cost of materials, you know, what the density of that project is and how they can spread the costs out over that project to make it work, more than, than the fee issue. But we, we will, if, if the developer wants to entertain a conversation about, you know, some fee relief, we would, as, as a matter of practice, you know, bring that to council if, if, if that's what's necessary to really make a project work for consideration. So in that case, it would be more on a case-by-case basis. If council was aware of a particular project that was very difficult to make work financially or economically, and there was some desire for fee relief, then, you know, I think we would, you know, work with the city manager and the council through the subcommittees to bring something forward to, to, you know, grant some free relief. There is a process within our development impact fees to look at economic benefits of projects and they provide so that you make some findings that support and provide a basis for, for why you might want to relieve a project of, of certain impact fees.
No, that's what I wanted to find out. That's an important component, I think. So thank you for that. My last question, Mr. Mayor, if I may, is getting over to the page 146, dealing with the athletic, athletic league fees to use the parks. Could you explain that one to me, please? Is this for like, like the ponytail and the boosters and the groups that use the fields to play all nonprofit, all by donations, and we're charging them a fee to use the park?
I don't have that, there apparently was a resolution that was adopted in 2002, which I don't have a copy of that, so.
Well, I would like to at least suggest that we revisit that one because I really find it difficult when we're asking all our residents to donate so these kids have a place to play and- place to play and participate in sports activities since the city, based, we don't have the ability to provide a park and rec program within the city. We depend on volunteers. I think at the very least, we should not be charging these same volunteer groups a fee for the kids to have a place to play tournament. So, that is what I'd ask, that we take a look at that.
Yeah, we can always waive the fee.
Yeah. Well, I don't see that in here, but anyway, I just wanted to ask that we look.
Yeah, routinely, you know, the big leagues that we have the most contact with, using the parks, are youth soccer, which are using the outfield at City Park as well as Ferber Park. We also have contact with Little League. We have contact with Ponytail softball as well as the Adult League softball. Those are primarily the major sports leagues, so it's not all children, but three of the four that we have contact with do make application for the parks, let us know when they're going to be using the fields, and they do pay, they do pay, have to, they pay a fee and they have to show us proof of insurance. There are other users of the park that at times have approached me and asked for me to, as city manager, to waive the fee. An example would be a vacation Bible school that's operated by the Waters Church. That is one that this year approached me. They were going to use the park for one week, City Park for one week, to be able to have their sports session of their vacation Bible school, and we did waive that fee. The other one that everybody knows about is we do make Friday Night Live pay an application fee, but they do not pay the fee to rent the plaza. So, the basic application fee just has to do with processing the application, and then this additional fee actually has to do with the, you know, to cover, help us cover the cost of the watering and the mowing. We do, the volunteers do at times help maintain the fields, but, you know, we still are, city staff's still responsible for making sure that materials get delivered, that things are kept in safe and orderly, and that the restrooms are kept, and the restrooms are kept clean and the paper supplies stocked.
So, I do understand all that. I still would like to see a mechanism where we waive the fees for the youth groups that are organized, the Ponytail, Boosters, the soccer group. So, I would like to ask that we consider that as a council and give direction to our staff accordingly. So, thank you.
Well, what I'm going to recommend is that we put that on the finance subcommittee. We have a meeting this coming Thursday, so it's a little late to get it on that agenda. But to follow, and we'll discuss the athletic fees and get back to you with some type of a report.
Recommendation, thank you.
Council members, before I turn it over to the public, anything else on the fees?
I did a bunch of research because I'm kind of that way, but I called, like, to do a biotic assessment and to get a consultant to come out and do a biotic assessment on a parcel is $1,500 bucks. To do a hydro geological study on a parcel, if you don't touch the well, it's $5,000 across the board, anywhere from San Francisco up, $5,000 bucks. So, because I looked at some of these fees too and kind of caught my breath, so I thought, I'm going to make some phone calls and see what this actually costs. And if they touch the well, then add another, at least $2,000 to $3,000. Then if you have to go further than that, there's other, like, water and wastewater. You're up to 20 grand so quick in just fees to pay the consultants to do it that I realized that our fees actually were fairly good.
They're competitive.
Yeah. And I think the thing that, you know, I always try and keep in mind, some of the fees do seem kind of steep, but we're here to recoup the cost of the city for moving forward with some of these projects. And if an individual needs some financing of some of the fees, we could arrange that for them. But to subsidize the construction of their units or their apartment complex, it's not the city's job. And Joe, I don't think you meant to imply that by any means, but, so if there's nothing else from the council, I'm going to open up a public hearing. Okay? Anyone in the audience that would like to come up and address this item under public comment, please come up and state your name. Don't everybody rush up here. But state your name and address. Okay. Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the dais. And we have some directions. There's a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce a resolution by title only, and I would like to ask that the subcommittee do review that one item. City of Cloverdale Resolution Number 043-2017, a resolution of the Cloverdale City Council establishing and updating the schedule of fees and charges for the city services and repealing previous adopted and conflicting fees and charges for such services.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bagby. Linda, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Next item is Resolution 044-2017, authorizing the city manager to execute professional services agreement with West Yoast Associates for hydraulic study and preliminary design services for the downtown drainage infrastructure. And Mark, I believe this is your topic?
That's correct. When I joined the city back last July, I was kind of given a tour of various facilities, and I, one thing I noted was that there's a crosstown drainage structure of unknown history. We have no records of this. It's basically a box culvert, some sections, other sections is unknown material. But basically, a creek that used to run through town way back in the 20s and 30s was covered and put under, for the most part of the length of it, it's under private property. For example, under the police station, it runs under the police station. So, part of my job is to assess some of these facilities and improve them so that they don't create a hazard or potential, you know, hazard for us, kind of mitigate it. So, when we had the serious storms just past winter, we had one incident where the drainage jumped the banks because of a fallen tree and kind of rushed through town, bringing a lot of mud with it. So, that was one incident. Another incident is where the actual conduit failed right next to the brewery. It kind of created a sinkhole there, we'd like to call it a sinkhole, but it's just basically the pipeline had collapsed in a section. So, as part of this, FEMA approved the vista view disaster relief there, but part of their program is to mitigate any other significant items that may impact the city in the long term. So, I took the opportunity to go ahead and submit our interest in addressing this downtown drainage, as I call it, because it's an unknown drainage name, unknown creeks that various, you know, watershed here that's quite large and moves quite a bit of water, especially when we have these significant rainfall events. What we saw last winter, even though we had a lot of rain, it was only the 50 percentile, and that was at capacity for, during our inspection. So, it was running full at a 50 percentile rainfall event. So, at 100%, we can expect flooding in the downtown area. So, well, like I said, I have identified one mitigation measure funding source, and that was FEMA through the President's proclamation. That kind of opened up that avenue to address mitigating projects. The second one that we came up with too is a resource enhancement project. It's basically under Senate Bill 1 for groundwater enhancement, and so this project could function both as mitigating potential disaster and also enhancing our groundwater in the area, in the region. So, we've applied to both sources as part of the funding, but we do need to define what that project is and how, basically, how we're going to, you know, define this project, capture those creeks, and basically get it out of this aged conduit and into a properly-sized pipeline. So, that's basically the outline of what I foresee a project. Through qualifications, I got ahold of West Yoast, and they're one of the premier water resource firms in the state of California to start the process. They did the application for me for the FEMA, for the federal funding, and they're ready to go ahead and prepare a full application package and project definition for us at this point.
Thank you, Mark. Council members, anything? Carol?
No, my questions were answered at the Public Works Subcommittee.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. Well, Mark, I just have a couple before I open it up to the public here. So, the funding that you've identified for this, a possible funding, they're all grants?
They are all grants, but that's, you know, there could be some city contribution to this project. It could be, and I don't know what the mix is because it depends on the funding level, but, you know, the city could be on hook for some of the costs of this. And so, we need to start thinking about other funding opportunities, and part of this study will identify some of those.
And do we know the maximum amount of the grant? It would depend on?
No, that has not been defined. The federal government, states in their thing, they have billions, but, you know, how they allocate that is on a competitive basis, and that's managed through the OES.
Okay. Well, you know, not to sound like a broken record to staff, because I know I mentioned this to Paul and David, you know, that culvert goes back, like you said, you know, hundreds of years. And I've always been of the opinion that when it runs on private property, it's not the city's responsibility to maintain it, but once we touch it anywhere, it's our responsibility to do the whole thing. And, you know, if it's coming from grant money as opposed to our general fund, I'm fine with that. But, you know, the general fund to fund a project of this magnitude would be devastating to our general fund. So, the only thing I'm going to caution is, before we proceed, let's make sure that we're not assuming any liability for that.
The reality is, is if one of these structures failed, you know, we, the city would be in the jackpot. We'd be receiving claims from the private property owners, whether it was a drainage going across private property, or it was a structure that the city had at one time built and maintained. This current structure passes, or the current drain passes under a number of structures. And, you know, one of them being the police station, the other one being the Cloverdale Food Mart is another one that it passes under. And then if you've ever walked down the sidewalk past Ruth McGowan's to the south, you're walking right over the top of the structure. I don't think, many people aren't even aware that it's there. So, you know, I, when Mark brought this forward, acting as the city engineer, it is a critical structure that has, was built in frontier days, to the best of our knowledge, and if it does fail, as, well, it did fail this past winter in one spot, and the crew was able to get out and patch and shore it up. But there are areas where if it does fail, it could be, it can, it could be catastrophic. The other way that I'm viewing it also, Mr. Mayor, is that the way that the drain does pass through the downtown area, it does make portions of the downtown area undevelopable as it is. So, if we want to look to develop our, you know, our downtown with greater density, which has, you know, been described to me as the vision, this, something has to happen with this drain. And really, what we're trying to do is just develop some concepts on, you know, on how to route it. You know, Mark and I have had some discussions on upstream detention basins as a way of smoothing the hydraulic load, rerouting the drain so it's, you know, passing through public right-of-way than rather than across public property. But, you know, the argument, the argument when a disaster happens on whether that's private property or city property, you know, that's what the city attorney then gets paid for, and those type of fees can get really expensive. These type of drainage projects can also get very expensive, and I think that this is really also about trying to figure out, you know, what is the magnitude of this project? I can tell you the value, there's a tremendous value in the real estate in the downtown area, so we'll be able to compare the value of the project to the value of the real estate as well as the development potential of real estate around the drain.
Sure. And actually, about four years ago, we did have a home collapse that was built on top of the culvert. And I'm not saying we shouldn't proceed with it, with the study at least, but we really need to think about how we're going to do this.
And I've read, I reviewed the file on that incident. You know, the city was deeply involved in that case, and I think we ended up paying, we ended up paying for a portion of the settlement in that case.
All right. Arian?
I just wanted to say that I was the owner of Ruth McGowan's brew pub when, not the building, the business, when that drain failed, that box culvert failed under that sidewalk, took our, took the sidewalk out, the patio out, everything, and made a terrible mess. And that was the same year that it took that house, a good section of the house that overhung the creek. And a few years before that, the box culvert failed just south of the Citrus Fair exit on the Quonset Hut property, and it took the one whole section of that land between where the Quonset is and the house, and it completely collapsed, a very wide segment. And that segment was actually bypassed, and now it's got a completely new box culvert down the side. But I, I knew I'm not supposed to do that, but I kind of crawled down in there one time because I was curious about what was down there. And there's, especially from First Street down to Lake Street, there's a lot of sewer lines and stuff, it appears to me, that are actually running through the box culvert. And if that's not a bad idea, I haven't seen any yet. I mean, it's like, if you want to crawl in there, you can just go down by the, by the bridge and just come.
I would discourage. We discourage that.
Yeah. But I was surprised at how many, how bad that whole section really is. Structurally, it's a mess, and if it starts to move again, it's going to bust sewer lines, it's got water lines in it that actually go through the culvert. So, I'm for it.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I haven't crawled through. I'm not going to.
You could come next time.
No, 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 it's fine. I'm okay with it. I always believe what you tell me. But seriously, when I looked at this and when I heard Mr. Runkins' discussion, and we talked about it today, I thought, we have an obligation to start on this. You know, it's like, once you know it, especially as a council member, once you really, really know it and you understand the size and the possibilities of this, I couldn't turn away from it. I wouldn't be able to vote no for it. We're going to have to start, and I think future, in the future, people may be very grateful that we did.
Infrastructure is critical.
Absolutely critical, yeah.
Mr. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I have to ditto what Councilmember Russell and our city manager said. I think this is critical. Thank you for bringing this up. Thank you for getting this on the agenda. Thank you for finding grant funding, potentially.
Really?
It's just really, really, you know, it's proactive. We don't want to react. We're going to react if it, if we don't do anything, and it's not, if it fails, it's when it fails, and we need to get in front of it and fix it. And I appreciate that, and I think it's critical that we move forward. But to do that, we need to know what it's going to take, what it's going to cost, and what we have to maybe share some of that cost and how we're going to fund that. So, all that comes down the road, but thank you.
Council members, anything else? Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to step up to the podium and say a few words? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back, and I believe we have a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, we read the resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 044-2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with West Yoast Associates to perform drainage study and storm drain pre-design.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bagby. And a roll call, please, Linda?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Next item is Resolution 045-2017, authorizing the submittal of the fiscal year 2017 aviation administration grant application. And Paul, this is yours?
Yeah, I'm covering this one tonight, and your airport manager, Michael Morrissey, is in the audience also, and Michael and I work very closely. is in the audience also, and Michael and I work very closely on managing the airport. What you have before you tonight is our annual grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration. The way the Federal Aviation Administration works its Airport Improvement Grant Program is they fund 90% of the project. The city is responsible for the remaining 10%, but a portion of that remaining 10% then gets covered by the State of California Department of Aviation and Aeronautics. We program and schedule the, what they call the Airport Improvement Grant, or AIP Grant. And this year, the grant that we've brought forward is to design and install a, what's called a Precision Approach Path Indicator. We call it a PAPI. A PAPI light is a, there is already a PAPI light at the airport, which is on the approach to the airport from the south. This would be the installation of a PAPI light from the approach from the north. What the PAPI light allows is aircraft that are approaching the runway using the indicator lights, they have a, can judge whether they're within the proper glide path approaching the thresholds at either end of the airport. And, you know, I'm not a pilot, so maybe Michael can explain this better than I can, but if you're, with a PAPI light, if you're too low, you see two red lights. If you're in the glide path, you see two white lights?
You're too high.
You see the red and the white.
And a white.
You're too high, you see two whites.
You see two whites.
Yeah.
So, it's really a, it's a, an aid for aviators as they, they're coming into our airport, and we already, like I said, we already have one PAPI light for, do you call it the?
Runway 32.
32. Runway 32. So, this was the opposite direction of approaching the runway, which would be runway 14.
Mike, could you just sign that green pad there before you start talking, just to be consistent with everyone?
Paul's summary on the agenda says a lot better than I could, but he was right. We have a PAPI light installed already for 32, and this is just another step or incremental improvement at the airport to solve runway 14 as well. It's a visual indicator for pilots, and it's a safety measure for the pilots. It tells them they're on a good path. It also keeps planes from flying too low around the airport on their patterns.
And just so the, so the public knows, we, the projected project, the grant from the FAA for the installation and design of this light is $47,763. The city's portion of that is $2,919.
And the state?
And the state, when we apply for their matching grant, would be $23,088.
Twenty three.
Twenty three hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Twenty hundred, yeah.
Sorry. So, you can see, we get, for the, when we apply for these grants, for the value that we get for the, our contribution is quite great. Sorry, I misspoke. The state's match is $2,388. The city's portion is $29,019. And the federal portion is $47,763.
Is it, is it $2,900 or $29,000 for the city?
Twenty nine thou, twenty nine hun.
We're finished with it, $29,000.
$2,919, sorry.
Okay. I think we, I think we got those numbers right, so, thank you, Mike. Council members?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one question. Are these going to be LED or solar? Do they do solar in this? I can't, I couldn't find out if they did.
No, they're electrically powered.
Yeah, they're just going to be electric?
Yes. There's electric just running down the runway right now to illuminate the runway lights.
That's what I thought, okay.
That will be extended with a conduit underground to the north end of the runway.
So, just be LED or whatever they use?
Is there not, they're, you know, to be honest with you, the ones that we have in place now are incandescent bulbs, just very high intensity incandescent bulbs.
Okay.
They're focused beams, and then there's a series of lenses in front of it. And I believe, I don't, I've never heard of an LED PAPI light.
But they discussed it, and that's why I was curious, because I don't, I didn't know that they were doing these things.
It would be, if, it would be one or the other, I'm not sure which.
Okay, just curious.
The consulting room felt was best for us.
Let's go on. Council members, anything else? Okay, I'd like to open up, open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to address the item, please come up and give us your name and your thoughts. Seeing no one, we're going to close the public comment section on this item and bring it back to the dais for a resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read the resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 045-2017. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale authorizing the submittal of an FAA Airport Improvement Program Grant Application for Installation of Precision Approach Path Indicator, or PAPI light, on the north runway approach at the Cloverdale Municipal Airport.
Seconded.
Seconded by Paula. Would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye. Next item, item number 12, Resolution Number 046-2017, authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Two to Professional Services Agreement with W Trans for Design Traffic Safety Improvements to South Cloverdale Boulevard and Treadway Drive and South Cloverdale Boulevard and Santana Extensions. Paul?
Yeah, this, the item.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Yeah, Mark will cover this one.
Yeah. So, as we all know, anybody who's driven down on the South Boulevard knows that the issues we're having with Treadway and the increased traffic we're seeing as a result of Ferber Plaza and now Grocery Outlet, with another development happening here shortly, it just, you know, something that needed to be addressed, it's finally getting addressed. Basically, W Trans, we engaged their services in January, they came up with a solution after doing their traffic counts and all the fun stuff that traffic engineers do, they go down there and they track, they count the traffic, and they're turning cars and all that, and they've come up with the need for traffic signals, not only at Treadway, but at Santana as well. So, the two intersections will work in conjunction with each other in terms of signalization, but also they, W Trans looked at the overall operation and did some lane reconfiguration to pass not only vehicles but bicycles as well, so there's some bike lanes that they're recommending, et cetera. So, restriping the whole southern end of the Boulevard to accommodate multimodal transportation and pedestrians. And so, what I've attached to the thing is a graphic of what the preferred solution is for these two intersections. We looked at the cost of what would be the preliminary cost for delivering this project, and it's costly. It's about $800,000 to do both signalizations and restriping of the whole southern end of the Boulevard. We thought about doing it in two phases. Cost-wise, we would be paying a little bit more because of the phasing, but also functionality, it's just better to address the whole operational needs for traffic down at the southern end of town at once, rather than trying to pace it out, you know, in terms of funding. And in terms of funding, too, we've identified about half the cost from the traffic impact fees. So, we do have, at least in the budget, half the amount, and then there's, working with Joanne, we've identified a couple other sources for this, but there'll still be about, I would say, $300,000 that the city's going to need to either pull from the general fund or find a financing mechanism to get it done. But this one only addresses, at this point, putting together a construction bid document, so a design, specifications, plans to go out to bid, and whether we go out to bid is, it will be a decision later.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Council members, questions?
No, I just wanted to comment, this was really the result of a good bit of study at the Public Works Subcommittee. And when you look at it, we've discussed it a number of times in different ways, but again, it's a safety factor, and looking at also how to move people in that increasingly busy area to the businesses and to their homes, and at the same time, protect them so that we don't have the problems we sometimes have had of people crossing streets when strange things are going on. It is expensive, but we have, again, we have to start, and down here particularly, this is key.
Yeah. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I concur, this is really needed, and sooner than later. It's heavily used, there's a lot of vehicle and pedestrian and bicycle traffic in that area, and it's growing every day, and a lot of youth that use that and cross those streets, and it's very difficult with the way it's currently configured. I would like to know, is there any possibility of getting some grant funding to augment some of these funds? I know the Office of Traffic Safety, and there's other programs that do have some types of fundings for these, and I would like to make sure we're at least exploring those areas.
Indeed, and I'd like to also go ahead and ask W Trans to include an additional task for funding, identifying funding sources, because that was discussed this morning at the Subcommittee meeting, and so I'd like to go ahead and add, you know, add that to your contract, and I think there's enough funding there to go ahead and cover that.
Excellent, because I do know there are some grants out there. I'm not sure if this would meet that criteria, but I know they do have those grants available.
Correct, from the safety standpoint, yeah.
David?
Mayor Walter, if I can add to Mark Roncone's comments about grant funding, staff has identified some funding through the Sonoma County Transportation Agency and their fund for clean air. There's a bicycle component that's included in the proposed design, some green bike lanes. That portion of the project can be funded with some other, with other sources of funds. So, I think, you know, working with Public Works Department and Mark, we'll look at the opportunities for that. Some of the funding cycles come up in early spring, so this work, if you authorize it tonight, will kind of get us in good position to be able to apply for some of those funds as part of the next spring funding cycle, at least for that, you know, the bicycle component. But I think what Mark is also wanting to do with W Trans is look at other grant funding sources through SCTA and other funding agencies.
I just wanted to thank you for mentioning SCTA. It went in my head and out as we were talking, but yeah, there's going to be addition, and what I see here, too, is there are two or three different ways to approach this in terms of funding, because we not only have one of the two main entrances to our city, and we're dependent upon it being not only safe, but accessible for economic development, but we also have everything from kids going to school to people getting to not only the grocery store, but sometimes the pharmacy and everything else on foot. This is a really intense area, and I think there's a lot here that we're doing that is, when I looked at it, it's almost innovative. It was, it's not cutting edge, but there, you know, there were two or three different solutions here that were just great. So, I think we've got so many cylinders on which this thing is functioning that we ought to be able to get some money, maybe more money flowing through, I hope.
If I might, one comment, you know, the reason, the cost here, because when you look at this design and the way that these two streets are aligned, it's not really a, it's not just a single, single, single traffic control device, it's really two. And the way that this would be designed is they would be integrated and linked with each other, but the, you know, Treadway and Santana don't align, and the distance between them is not that great. So, you're really talking about two traffic signals, not one.
Thank you. Council members, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to talk about this item, come on up and give us your name and tell us what you have to say. Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the dais for a resolution to be offered.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the Resolution by Title Only, City of Cloverdale, City Council Resolution Number 046-2017. Resolution of the City Council, City of Cloverdale authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with W Trans and Corp. to develop design documents for the signalization of South Cloverdale, Treadway, and Santana Drives intersection.
Seconded.
That was seconded by Russell. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye. Next item, item 13, Resolution Number 047-2017, authorizing the city manager to execute Exclusive Negotiation Agreement, ENA, with Alexander Valley Healthcare for a certain portion of property located at the Times Square property. And this item is, David?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. There's considerable background on the development of Times Square properties, the council knows, as we've, over the past year, been working on various aspects of the future development of the Times Square property. Most recently, in February of this year, council approved a scope of work with Braggy and Race Consulting Engineers to provide master engineering services for the Times Square property. Namely, a key aspect of that scope of work was preparation of a parcel map and plot plan, or lot plan for the Times Square property that included really an area for four key provisions, one of which was identified on the site plan as Lot A, which is to support future development of a new police station. Secondarily, Lot B, which was intended to support a future wellness center that would be developed by Alexander Valley Healthcare. Third is Lot C, which is a site identified for future retail development. And last but not least, Lot D, which would support a future skate park. Also, a key component of that site plan was the extension of Washington Boulevard through the site so that it would connect with existing Hillsburg Avenue as, and, you know, connect and provide adequate circulation to Washington Boulevard in front of Washington School. As we've been working through that effort, working cooperatively and closely with all the partners, including the Police Department, the skate park interests, our Public Works Department, as well as Alexander Valley Healthcare, it came to our attention that Alexander Valley Healthcare has a grant requirement to identify that they have site control on Lot B, which is the proposed for the future home of the Alexander Valley Healthcare Wellness Center. According to Debbie, there's a real strict timeline of July 28th to identify site control to ensure that the grant is secured. And we've, in the last few months, you know, since we've retained Braggy and Race, we've been working with Alexander Valley Healthcare, Debbie and her architect on an exclusive negotiating agreement, or ENA. The purpose of really the ENA is to identify that we would most specifically agree to negotiate only with Alexander Valley Healthcare on the disposition of that specific lot, Lot B. And what's included in your packet is a copy of the ENA. There were some legal terms that we had to work through with our city attorney's office and their attorney, but what was included in your packet is a representative of that product. Some of the key deal points included in the ENA include a term. We did identify that the term in that agreement would be 12 months, though it could be extended for up to additional 12 months by council. Deliverables is really geared towards the production of a purchase and sale agreement, as well as a development agreement, which would ultimately guide the, you know, future disposition of the property, meaning we would agree on a price and we would sell it, at which point the Alexander Valley Healthcare would take ownership of the property, and the development agreement would set forth how that property would be developed. So, at this stage, really, this ENA is just, gives us the exclusive right to negotiate with Alexander Valley Healthcare on the property itself, and it gives the, in turn, it gives Alexander Valley Healthcare, you know, an adequate legal document to provide to their federal funding agencies to show that they have site control. I do want to share with council that this doesn't mean that we're approving the project. This project still has to go through the appropriate planning processes and design review and a conditional use permit. So, there are things that will, will come before you in terms of your, in the commission, planning commission, in terms of, you know, reviewing the final design, lot layout, but this really gives them some security in knowing that the effort and the money and the resources that they're putting into this project, you know, is done so with faith that they're that they're putting into this project, you know, is done so with faith that they're working directly with the city in negotiations for the future property. Staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution this evening that would authorize the city manager to execute the exclusive negotiating agreement, and we would plan to do so immediately so that we could get that to Debbie Howell and her team, you know, so that, post haste so that she can ensure the federal government that she has site control for the purposes of, of the federal grant. So with that said, I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, David. Councilmembers? No questions? Well, I just have a couple. And when you say site control, you're referring to the fact that they have like, almost like a first right of refusal, that they've got control over the site and we are only going to be negotiating with them?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, you know, over the last month or so, there's been a little, a meeting that we had with Debbie and the architect, and, you know, tweaking of that one south intersection there on Hillsburg Avenue and Cloverdale Boulevard, we were going to tweak that a little bit. This document still gives us the flexibility to do that.
Absolutely. It really doesn't speak to ultimate design of the project. In fact, in conversations with, with the architect, he's already indicated that they're, they're working on, on kind of moving the footprint to accommodate what we've requested to really kind of create that vision triangle in the corner of Hillsburg Avenue and Cloverdale Boulevard, and create that, that visual corridor that, that the council's expressed they'd like to see.
Yeah. I knew the answer to that, I just needed it in the, I needed it in the public record. Thank you, David. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the audience, if anyone has anything to say about this, otherwise we're going to move forward with the resolution. Seeing no one, let's bring it back to the dais, and we have a resolution.
I'd like to offer this resolution. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 047, 2017, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale authorizing the city manager to execute an exclusive negotiating agreement, an E-N-A, with Alexander Valley Healthcare for certain portions of property located at the Times Square property for design and development of a wellness facility, and I'm looking forward to seeing it there.
I'll gladly second that, and I'm looking forward to that facility being built.
That was seconded by Paula. Could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye. And I too look forward to that, being there. Thank you. Okay, next, next item is authorizing the city manager to execute another professional services agreement. Paul, you're going to be busy, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm right as crap already.
And this has to do with the Cherry Creek Affordable Housing Property, and this is David, you again.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of council, and as last item, I'm also excited to bring this forward. The council, back in 2007, you know, took control and purchased the, what we otherwise called the Cherry Creek property. This property was purchased with low and moderate income housing funds. I'm going to just stick it.
David, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brigham just pointed out that, you know, she may have a conflict because her property touches that.
So I should probably leave?
Does she need to recuse herself now or after the presentation?
Now, yes, thank you.
All right.
Because I live right next door. She's a real property interest. Yes.
So we're going to let the records reflect that Councilmember Brigham has removed herself from the dais because of a conflict of interest, and it has to do with her property being adjacent to the Cherry Creek parcel. So David, with that being said?
Yeah, I'll continue. So subsequent to acquisition of the property by the former Cloverdale Redevelopment Agency, as this council knows, Governor Brown initiated dissolution of redevelopment as we, as we used to know it. And that set in process a timeframe for basically the development clock for any properties that are considered housing assets of the former redevelopment agency. That, the housing clock established an initial timeframe of five years to begin additional development of the property, or disposition of the property, or leasing it in a long-term lease to an agency that's going to manage it for affordable housing purposes. The council in 2012 executed a lease agreement with the Cloverdale Community Outreach Committee for use of the property for transitional housing. That agreement has, has been extended a number of times and is authorized, the city manager is authorized to, to extend that lease for an additional two years or through 2019. In order to comply with the dissolution law, staff's desires to initiate redevelopment activities on that property for affordable housing purposes, what we've done is work with a local development and architectural firm that has experience in developing affordable housing projects. And with that said, I'd like to introduce Architect Mitch Connor, as well as Architect Paul Fritz, and they can kind of speak specifically to their qualifications. Mitch Connor just so happened to be the architect on our fire station project. Mr. Fritz is also intimately involved in the design of a project for the county and for a kind of a concept tiny house project. So we felt they were uniquely qualified firm to help work with the city on development of a concept plan for, for our Cherry Creek property. What we work with them on is a scope of work that would enable us to come up with a concept plan that builds upon what's there today. As they indicated, the, the council approved a lease agreement for operation of the property for transitional housing purposes, and what we'd like to do is look at expanding upon that, that type of use that's there through further development of the property. But first and foremost, what we'd like to do is come up with a concept plan that we think works within our, you know, is within our means, but also supports the, kind of the existing use of the property as transitional housing. We've brought forward the scope of work to the Planning and Community Development Subcommittee. The Subcommittee reviewed it. There is the members of the Board of Directors for the Cloverdale Outreach Committee, and they overwhelmingly supported the proposed scope of work with Archologics to undertake this effort. One of the key components of this scope is, you know, to really look at the site, look at the existing, the existing transitional housing units on it, see what, whether those can be preserved or moved, look at its development capacity based on its zoning, look at the creek, look at the environmental resources on the property. Kind of the vision would be to really improve the site appearance through improving the frontage, you know, ensuring that you've got sidewalks, you've got driveways that are safe, you know, making and upgrading the, the existing housing units on the property, and doing it so, in such a way that we, we also meet the locational requirements of, of the residents that are there. And so the scope of work that Archologic has prepared would enable us to, to work with the Cloverdale Outreach Committee on, on a plan that we could then bring back to council and look at the economics of that, determine how, how we might be able to fund future development of the site, both with existing housing bond proceeds that we have, but with also, as we've talked about earlier, Times Square property, if upon sale of those parcels, as you know, those funds need to go back into our low and moderate housing income fund, we can then use those proceeds to help us with future development of this property. So we're, but, you know, along that way, we want to make sure that we know that we can do something that works within our budget. You know, there's, there's reference to past projects on that, on that site, and when I looked at the budget, they, they were, it was, you know, it's well over a $20 million project, and with, with the loss of redevelopment, it's unlikely they were going to be able to secure that kind of funding with that kind of density. And then there usually is a long-term commitment in terms of the, the operation of an affordable housing project. We have something there now that works. Colleen Halbom, who's here tonight, I know, can speak to, you know, the success of the transitional housing project, and, you know, that, that was kind of the basis for this concept with, with Archologic. So staff's recommendation is that you adopt the resolution in your packet that would authorize the city manager to, to enter into an agreement, and that would kind of start the process. And we've certainly indicated to the, the board with the Cloverdale Outreach Committee that we'd work collaboratively with them, as well as the community in coming up with a plan that would work for the property.
David, before I open it up to the council, and then to the public, and I invite Mitch and Paul to come up, a few months back, maybe, maybe even closer to a year, Jim Letty came up and did a presentation on housing and funding that the county had available, and it was possible then that Cloverdale could, could get some of that county money. Would we qualify for any of that under this program, or do you even know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, in fact, today, the Sonoma County Community Development Commission issued a Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA, for affordable housing projects. You know, it came in late afternoon, I didn't have the opportunity to look at it yet, but I think that's an example of funding that's available. You know, usually what those types of funds do target is low and moderate income folks, certainly transitional housing fits within that criteria. So, you know, there, there may well be an opportunity for us to explore the use of those funds. You know, with that said, there's always caveats and grant requirements that we really need to closely look at, and, you know, we're just now kind of embarking upon this process, but we can certainly, you know, spend more effort, and, you know, I think staff would want to, you know, when you have a viable project and you've got some local funding, it kind of tends to make you more competitive in the grant process. So, you know, it may very well be that we, we can successfully compete for, for these, these local grant funds now that they're, before they, they weren't eligible to be used within the city boundaries, and that was one of the big changes that the county has made, recognizing the need for urban infill, so.
Maybe, maybe we can invite Jim up to a preliminary meeting so that he can maybe take some ownership and, and back us if there's any funding available. Paul?
I think transitional housing is, is key to, as a solution to homelessness. It's not clear to me right now in terms of the county's direction on their Housing First program, whether transitional housing is a priority or not. I can tell you, in terms of Cloverdale, it is something that is badly needed here. And, you know, maybe Colleen can help answer this question, because it's, that's an issue that appears to be developing, is this, and is, with the county's push to housing first, does that include transitional housing? When you hear the definition of housing first, I, I, I wonder, because I'm not, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure that they know yet either. So I think it's important to represent Cloverdale when we are before the county, is that for us, transitional housing is, we, we see it as an important part of, of how we shelter and provide for, for our homeless here in Cloverdale.
And because they don't know, maybe that's why we should get Jim up here now. Cal, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, I just wanted to add a comment. I'm particularly interested in the tiny house aspect here, and I think that's something that very possibly could give us an edge in terms of looking at certain grants. So I'm pleased that it's included. That was my only comment.
Thank you. Joe?
Just a quick comment. When Jim Letty was here, he made it real clear there, cities that had a location identified and ready to go would be a higher priority, and we did bring up our Cherry Creek property, and he indicated that was exactly what they're looking for. So I think, I like your idea, we should invite him up and get a dialogue going, since we do have a location and we're now putting a plan together and try to start laying a foundation to get some additional funding, so. But he clearly said that, that a lot of the cities that want, they don't have a location identified, and they're not at that stage, so we are.
Melanie, anything at this point? Okay, I'd like to invite Mitch, Paul, Colleen, if you'd also like to come up, if you want to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you. Just remember, there's a green pad there on the podium, if you could just sign your name, that'd be great.
I have a brief statement I'd like to just read, if I could.
Please.
My name is Colleen Halbom. I am a resident of Cloverdale and the Executive Director for Cloverdale Community Outreach, better known as The Wallace House. On behalf of our Board of Directors, and most importantly, our clients, I would like to take this opportunity to once again thank all of you for your continued support of our agency. As a direct result of this support, in the past five years, our agency has been able to place over 125 individuals and families in permanent housing, who were previously literally homeless. We could not have done this without the support and caring of the City of Cloverdale, who believes strongly in our efforts to end homelessness in Sonoma County. We are particularly grateful for the continued use of Cherry Creek Village, where we operate our supportive and transitional housing projects. Without the use of these units, we would not have been able to be as successful in dramatically reducing the numbers of literally homeless people in our community. Access to these units has allowed us to move many of these clients from The Wallace House shelter and transition them into permanent housing. This new project will allow us to at least double and possibly triple our current capacity, thereby allowing us to place more seniors, single parents with children, and disabled individuals in housing, who are currently waiting patiently. Some are queued at The Wallace House, ready to go. We have a logjam, if you will, because there is no housing available, the rents are so high, and we're just, we're, we're stuck. Where in the past, we've had tremendous outcomes, there was more flexibility, and there just, it just doesn't exist. So without this, it's, this is really critical. This added capacity will also allow us to add a case manager, full-time case manager, which will then assist us in providing the necessary wraparound case management services. These services are the primary and critical component in our being able to address the systemic issues and allow the whole person, whole family approach, which allows our clients to flourish. So again, thank you to each and every one of you for your, for always being mindful of prioritizing these extremely vulnerable citizens of Cloverdale and Sonoma County. We are very excited about this project.
Thank you, Colleen. Councilmembers, any questions, or Colleen?
Nothing. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Very grateful. And I am available, if anyone wants to talk about this housing, first thing, it's pretty, it's a pretty dense topic, it does affect the potential for funding. Funding for housing, affordable housing in the county is very competitive. There are a lot of people are going to go after that $4 million. It would increase our case management requirements, so that could, that's another thing that we would have to consider as well. With the current clients that we are focused on, we're able to do it with what we would have available. If we go into housing first, it's going to require a tremendous amount of additional case management, and would also involve mental health, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, Cherry Creek.
And Colleen, I like the way you referred to Cherry Creek as Cherry Creek Village.
Cherry Creek Village.
I like that. For some reason, that's the first time I've heard of it. I always refer to it as Cherry Creek Low to Moderate Income Housing, you know, but Village sounds really nice.
I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitch, Paul, did you want to come down and say a few words? And please don't forget to sign the green pad on the podium there, else I'm going to get in trouble.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be back in Cloverdale.
Mitch, is it?
Oh, I'm Mitch, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Mitch Connor, Principal with Archologics. We're a architectural land planning consulting firm in Santa Rosa, doing work pretty much throughout the Bay Area and Sonoma County, of course. My own career, though, had a lot to do with Cloverdale. David mentioned the fire station, which was a nine-year planning effort that was very interesting, and we got very engaged with the community, and I think, you know, the outcome hopefully speaks for itself, that it was, it reflected the values of the community and the needs of public safety for, for Cloverdale. The work we do today, and I'll let Paul, who's, represents Fritz Architecture, he's a collaborator, a design collaborator for the Cherry, Cherry Creek Village project. We came to this actually through another nonprofit organization that we introduced to David and Paul a while back called Urban Community Partnership. And what it is, it's an interesting collabor- And what it is, it's an interesting collaboration of a pretty broad cross-section of not only the development and government representatives in the county, but a lot of special interest nonprofits that are basically saying, we need housing. And obviously, this is, you know, we're reading about it every day. And the process of how to do that is even more critical because it's not easy. It's a real challenge. And Paul will talk about the work he's doing with the county and the tiny homes project for a veterans project that he's doing. We currently have probably six housing projects happening in the town of Windsor, which is where I live, used to be a planning commissioner there. And it's everything from special needs housing, which was a group of parents from the Silicon Valley looking to relocate to the county for their young adult children who basically couldn't take care of themselves. So, it's the kind of resident that we probably would have seen at the Sonoma County Developmental Center. Now, we don't have that anymore, so that's a housing need. And then we're also doing a veterans housing project, working with the Vietnam Veterans Resource Center. Actually, Peter Cameron, maybe some of you know him, he's a resident here in Cloverdale, is the president of that organization. So, you know, we like to think that our process, while it's pretty rigorous and disciplined, is very inclusive and open and we listen and we make sure that everybody feels like a part of a of a very creative process of solving this this housing issue that we have. So, we're anxious to get going. We appreciate the opportunity, you know, to to be part of this project and look forward to engaging all of you, the community, sharing what we've learned in other in other communities, and then, you know, basically doing a project that tells your story about how to solve housing. So, I'll let Paul talk about the county project because I know there's an interest in the sort of tiny home idea of this particular site. And I'm also here for questions afterwards.
I'm Paul Fritz. So, as Mitch mentioned, I have my own architecture practice and we would be, you know, collaborating on this project. I've been working on affordable housing projects for almost 20 years, both here and in other places in the Bay Area. I've done quite a few Burbank housing projects. Another regular client of mine has been Community Housing Sonoma County. And they are actually the developer for the county project that's been mentioned, the sort of trial project for the the tiny house village that we're going to be starting construction maybe later this year. We're working on construction drawings right now and that's going to be 26 units. These tiny house units, they're 240 square feet, basically like little studios. They have their own kitchens and bathrooms. And, yeah, I think it's a really interesting idea for approaching, you know, the issue of homelessness, you know, trying to give people at least a place that's warm and dry and they can take care of their kind of everyday needs while they kind of get themselves back on their feet. And I think that is definitely something that could be appropriate for this site. And, yeah, I think as Mitch mentioned, you know, we're part of this nonprofit Urban Community Partnership that's looking on how to increase our housing supply and really increasing our housing supply in places that are appropriate to put our housing. And I think this is a great site to be adding more housing to. It's in your urban footprint, it's walkable in your community, there's already housing there. So, I think, you know, there's a lot more land that's not being used right now that could help satisfy a lot of the need for this type of housing in Cloverdale. So, yeah, I'm really excited about being able to bring my experience, my expertise to help you guys solve some of your housing issues. I mean, it's not going to solve every single issue of housing, but each little step we take, you know, helps the kind of overall bigger picture. So, again, I'm here to happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Councilmembers? I just have a couple. Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but is this stick construction or is it going to be modular units transported in and?
Yeah, it might be a little early to say. The the county project, we were originally looking at as being a modular project, but as we got into it, it seemed actually more conventional, more conventional type of project would be better for that situation. Yeah, I mean, that's something we'll explore as as we get into it a little bit further, but that is a definite possibility to something to look into, modular modular construction.
And the units that you're building down in Santa Rosa now, those are not transitional, those are permanent?
Those are going to be permanent, yeah. That's, that will not be transitional, so that's a little bit different.
You know, I don't think Cloverdale is going to have this problem because ours is going to be transitional and I know Colleen and how she manages. But, you know, when you do 200-square-foot tiny units and you have a lot of people in one space, I try and envision what that's going to look like five or six years down the road. You know, from a, I hate to use the word slump, but an unkept area.
Sure, sure.
So, that would always be my concern if we were to do something that was more permanent as opposed to transitional.
Yeah.
Any thought been given to that?
Well, I think, I think there are things that can happen to architecturally so that, you know, people feel like they are part of a community and responsible to others, not just themselves, you know, that's not like, you know, if you feel like you're part of this group of people or community, you feel more responsible for taking care of the community. There is definitely a management component to it. I mean, the county project is being developed and will be managed by Community Housing Sonoma County and they have a track record of, you know, managing properties, you know, they work with a variety of property managers, but they're very on top of that. One of their primary missions is providing supportive housing services, so they collaborate with a lot of different agencies to provide caseworkers and things to give people whatever help they need, you know, you know, learning how to do, you know, taking just care of their, you know, health services or financial services and things like that. So, they they really try to put those together. And the county project, it being a veterans project, there are other resources catering specifically to veterans, so there, that will be able to provide sort of ongoing maintenance of that facility, which will be a little bit different than this, you know, I mean, there's a different organization providing that services. But that provides a kind of continuing funding resource. It's like the VASH voucher program is what they're using for that specific project.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to say anything, come on up and, see, no one? Oh, Colleen, come on.
Just one more thing. So, just to go on the record, we need more capacity for small families. Okay, so the SRO model that you're referencing, I think, is great for, you know, single veterans that are in an SRO unit. What we have right now are nine SROs. They're too small. We are so limited in terms of our capacity to put in single parents, for example. So, I just want to make sure that that when we go forward, that we keep that in mind, that we really need some larger units. We have one three-bedroom house there and it severely limits our ability to place small families.
Well, Colleen, I can't imagine us moving forward with the final without you looking at it or being part of it.
Right.
Unless I got that wrong.
No.
No, and we've already established a good rapport here, but I just, and I think we can talk about that sort of thing later. But I think the model of an SRO is not something that we had talked about, but clearly is something that we're going to need to to consider because we do need room for small families. And the 240-square-foot is basically what we have now and we can't put families in there.
Right. Thank you, Colleen.
I think most of us have an image of a mix. I mean, we, because you're accommodating people at different stages of their lives, accommodating families, individuals, couples, so.
Okay, I didn't see anybody come up, so we're going to go ahead and move it back to the dais. Any further questions? If not, there's a resolution to offer.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce the resolution by title only, City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 048, 2017. Resolution of the City Council, City of Cloverdale authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with archa logic for architectural design and planning services for the Cherry Creek Village property.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bagby. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And Councilmember Brigham has recused herself. Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Walton?
Aye. Paula, would you tell Mary Ann she can come back in?
Sure.
Thank you. So, we're going to move on to subcommittee reports, but we're going to wait for Mary Ann to come back in. Paul, Mitch, thank you for coming up to Cloverdale.
Well, she, I thought she was out there. I'll go check out her.
The the set for the the next theater piece here at the Performing Arts Center is quite a maze back there, so.
She's coming. I found her.
You found her? Yeah, good. It's a, it's a very cool set, but it's, you can get lost back there.
Okay, Linda, let the records reflect that Councilmember Brigham has returned to the dais and we're going to move on to subcommittee reports. And the first one is the airport. Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next scheduled meeting is October 3rd at 8:00 AM at City Hall.
Thank you. Finance, please. That meeting is scheduled for the 27th in a couple of days at 2:00. Planning and community development, Ms. Bagby?
It's next, scheduled meeting is August the 23rd at 4:00.
Okay. Public Works?
Oh, that's me. Thank you. Well, you saw a lot of what we worked on, we met today. And you saw a lot of what we worked on at this meeting, including the downtown drainage, city park, discussed the South Cloverdale Boulevard signal. But the, our first item was regarding Rocky Dale Lane and with direction from the council at the last meeting, this went to the subcommittee and Ms. Verdi attended and we seem to have come up with a plan that is amenable to her. And we're going to move forward with an estimate and informed her that it will probably, it'll be most likely done in the next fiscal year. And we agreed in the meantime to communicate with her and help to maintain Rocky Dale in the best condition we can until, until we can get that that work done. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, that's correct. That's a good summary. Thank you.
Well, is that the, is that actually going to be the rubber pads that they had on?
No, no, no. The, 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 the solution that she re-agreed to was an asphalt concrete combination that would extend from Lakes, the sidewalk at Lake Street into
Her house.
Her, her house. And then it will be her responsibility to make it accessible from that paving into her house. And she seemed to be very amenable to that solution. So, I think we have a good solution that both parties are are happy with. And that concludes my report. Unless you have a question.
I do have a question, actually, on that very topic. Do we have a timeline for that work to take place?
It would be next fiscal year because the, we'll have, the funding will have to be put into next year's budget and it would be, it would be done, I believe, Engineer Jansen said he's, we're looking at, oh, gosh, now I'm going to need some help. Is it September of next year? Yeah.
We definitely could initiate something this fiscal year, you know, in terms of looking at the alternatives for paving that area and then probably issue a construction, you know, a paving project there at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
The other, the other thing, we were very clear with Ms. Verdi is on is if, if she is experiencing road issues, you know, deterioration, especially in that section between her home and Lake Street, prior to the paving being installed, she knows how to contact and has a relationship now with the Public Works Department. She's very thankful of the condition of the regrading that happens. And I think the Public Works Department is, is dedicated to making sure that we keep that section in good condition until it can be paved so that she can transit to the sidewalk. She is very clear that once she gets to the sidewalk, she can get anywhere that she wants to be in the downtown area. It's just a reasonable accommodation for that section of the alley between where her home is and the edge of the sidewalk.
It should be noted that she got herself to the meeting at City Hall. So, the, the, the packing that was, the work that was done enabled her, enables her to get from her front door to the sidewalk at Lake Street. But, of course, the concern is that because it's not pavement, it deteriorates after, especially after winter like we just had. So, but she knows that she can communicate very clearly directly with the city manager if there are, you know, any issues in the meantime. I think in a, in a perfect world, we would get that done sooner, but that's just the, that's the realistic timeframe.
Well, thank you.
We need, we need to take it out to bed and see how much it's going to actually cost, so.
Well, I appreciate that. I am still concerned about winter, you know, with the heavy rains and stuff. So, it's going to take a really a focus, you know, review of that area on a regular basis as we have rain to make sure that it is suitable for, to accommodate her ability to get in and out of her house. So, it's really important.
I think everybody's very conscious of that.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to just voice that.
Mary Ann?
She lives in, I know Susan, she lives in Barb Campbell's old house, like it's the second house in?
Yes.
Second, third house, right behind the auto shop.
Cottage and then there's
It's directly behind that, that greenhouse on the, on the corner.
Because that distance isn't very far. It's only like from here to maybe the wall back.
Not even that, I don't think.
But Rocky Dale's notoriously bad.
Yes.
Well, and her driveway isn't paved neither, so I
And she really, she's responsible for doing that portion. And I think that was the major concern is just to know what the direction was before she also made improvements to the home so that she, because it's someplace that that they want to live and that they want to stay in. So, they just, she feels, I think she feels confident that this is a solution that will work for her and that she'll be able to stay in that home and make improvements, that the improvements that, and the investments that she'll need to in order to be independent.
Well, I, you know, I'm glad to see that we're doing something to accommodate her. I just wish we could move it up a little bit and do it this fiscal year. Maybe once we get the cost estimates back, if we can scrounge up a couple bucks in the budget, borrow it somewhere and just, you know, it's easy to borrow money, I guess. I don't know, just borrow some money.
You would know, you would know.
It really, it really depends on what our cost estimate is. And I think, and I think Mark and his guys in his department understand this, especially this northern section of Rocky Dale and how important it is. You know, the important part of this whole compromise is to make a reasonable accommodation. And, you know, the, doing something on the northern end of Rocky Dale makes a lot of sense and it avoids work on the southern end of, end of Rocky Dale, which has a lot of complicated underground utilities, private sewer laterals, namely. That is, doesn't appear to be the, the issue on the northern sections. Original cost estimates on the paving, the entire length of Rocky Dale, really had to do with how complicated some of the utilities were on the southern end. So, this was, it was at the committee meeting, it was, it was a great relief to find out that Susan Verdi was, was really, really just interested in our reasonable accommodation to her home.
Aren't there still some testing wells? Or did they remove those?
Not sure about testing wells, but we do know that there are, it is an area where there is a, there is a complicated private sewer lateral system, especially on the, on the southern end, end of Rocky Dale Lane. And we do know that those laterals are not very deep. And so, that, that's a, that is, that was really an important thing for your city staff is once we were able to come to the compromise with, with Ms. Verdi, that it's really about, only about the small section to the north. And it's not entirely, the entire section in front of her house either. It's just so that she can have a, a pathway to roll on.
Mark, when do you think that estimate will be in?
I wouldn't fathom to guess right now. I mean, you're talking about a quarter million.
What, no, when do you think we'll have the estimate come in?
Oh, well, I have to engage the services of a, of a, a firm, you know, engineering firm, to give me a pavement design that's adequate for a partial, you know, half-street pavement or a part, you know, quarter pavement. And so, and depending on how deep we go, it'll determine the cost also because I don't know the quality of the condition of the road base itself, which is really important for sustaining a, you know, a long-term pavement job.
It just, it just blows my mind sometimes that to do something that small from here to that wall is $250,000.
Yeah.
I mean, Joe and I could go out there on the weekend with a bag of gravel brick.
Welcome, go ahead and do it, but the thing is that we have the prevailing wage laws here in State California also.
Mark?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would ask that, I'd like to have that estimate come back when we do our mid-year budget review so we can kind of see that number as we're talking about where we're at financially. So, I would like to So, I would like to put that in the record and see if we can at least, as we're reviewing mid-year budget, we could also look at that number.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Next is the joint fire, City Fire District?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have our next scheduled meeting for October 9th, but I'm going to ask our city clerk if she could maybe get that rescheduled. That date is not going to work for me. I will be out of town from September 28th through October 10th, so anytime after that would be fine, but, so we do not have a concrete date, but I will get it rescheduled.
Okay, and how about the City Schools District?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our joint city school district meeting will be September 11th, 5:00 p.m., City Hall Conference Room.
Thank you. Next is council reports, and thank you, Vice Mayor Paula and Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Bagby for submitting your reports in writing. We appreciate that time savings. Is there any one or two things on your reports that you would like to highlight?
I have extra copies of Councilmember Bagby's report.
Okay.
Since it was submitted here.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing I want to highlight is the tremendous success of Smart's soft rollout.
It was fantastic.
And I want to thank everybody who took the trips.
Yep.
I really appreciate it.
So, I had a question for Councilmember Russell. I really liked the city manager's shirt, a nice little Smart emblem in the edit.
Well, actually, I got, I brought them shirts for a lot of people. I don't know what happened. We, I know, David, you helped distribute it then. Did you not just left them in? So, if anybody needs a shirt, let me know if it didn't fit, because I brought in like six or eight or whatever it was.
I never saw them.
But you're going to write it out.
An extra-large would be very appreciated.
Okay, okay. Remind, do me a favor, send, send me an email so just remind me, because I gotta, I gotta get it to the right person.
Joe, if you, you could, you can have mine if you like, if you like so much.
You looked really good in your shirt.
Oh, no, everybody, hey.
I thought it was the engineer's cap that everybody liked.
I want everybody wearing them.
The medium did not fit me, Carol, so I'm, I'm going to put my, my, I'll send you an email.
I appreciate it.
But Carol, you really should be commended. Your work was visible everywhere, and especially, and this is not a trivial matter, the restrooms, and I've, I've helped people in and out of facilities in wheelchairs. They actually are something that someone who is in a wheelchair and their attendant can use. Not only that, the, the family who was in our car, I'm sure, used the diaper station and to everyone else's relief in the car, so it was, it, it's, those are not small things. I think that they get checked off and, oh, well, you know, there's, it's good enough, but it showed the attention to detail and the care and the dedication that, that you gave to this project. It was just, it was everywhere, and you and Deb and everybody else, it was
Yeah, there was a core of us who absolutely said you have to, and that's not normally done on trains of that size.
No, they're clearly used to
Including the baby, the baby diaper thing, you know, but it's, it's, it's very important.
Yeah.
I added a few things I won't discuss at the moment, a surprise to the bathroom one in particular, which I think will be a help, but I was very pleased, too. And the only problem I have is a little bit, people have to understand how those doors work.
Right.
You know, because you've got to push them, but they're very annoying.
Need a little training.
You kick them with your foot, Joe?
Yeah, just the follow-up on one comment. Really enjoyed the Smart train ride, and I want to commend you and the board for selecting Becoming Independent to do the food services. I think that was really a good move, and I did take advantage and had a cup of coffee and a pastry and a, very polite, very nice, very well-done.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad you said that.
That was really, really well-done. It was beautiful.
Thank you, thank you. I will carry that comment, I'll carry all of your comments back to staff and also to the folks from Becoming Independent, because I was very thrilled that they made the cut and, and became the vendor, and I think they're doing a great job.
Fantastic.
Cindy and I were exploring ideas on how we could hop on that train, go down to San Rafael, have dinner, and then come back.
Would it be nice?
Because it's really nice. Now, we just don't know if we want to drive down to airport, you know, to pick up the train. So, when it comes to Cloverdale, we're going to start doing that.
Get on the bus, get on the bus, you'll do all right.
Yeah.
I'm working, I'm working on extending that eventually, we all are.
Joe, did you have anything from your report you wanted to highlight?
No, I'm open for any questions, but all the different dates for the league events are there, so make note of them for the annual conference, et cetera, the other things that are there. That's it.
I'm working on six minutes here, so.
Are we trying to make, are we trying to get a record? Oh, okay.
Two hours.
Very, very quickly. I just wanted to bring especially to Councilmember Paula's attention, Sonoma Clean Power approved, it's about a $250,000 project where they already been contracting with the Sonoma County Water Agency to provide an educational program, so the, the water agency has been providing this to the third and fourth graders, and they have the, the staff, they have the educational specialists, they have the curriculum folks, and fortunately, because we've brought Cordell Stewart on over from the water agency, we've made that connection, and they're actually going to design a program to teach kids about renewable energy and about climate change, and so if you, some of my, some of my fellow board members were balking at the price tag, but if you do the math, it's, it comes out to about 40 bucks a kid, so I think that's a deal. And so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that we can hopefully get on board, that if there, if it will fit into the curriculum at Cloverdale Grade School, then we can be part of that program. I just think it would be a great opportunity for our third and fourth graders to have that as part of their, as part of their science curriculum.
Excellent.
So, let's just make sure we don't miss that opportunity.
Make sure we get it on the next agenda and talk about it.
Thank you, Melanie. Mary Ann, anything?
No.
Okay. Legislative reports? None. City manager, city attorney reports?
I think David has, David has something to report out on the, about the planning commission.
I just wanted to provide a quick update for the, for the council that staff has been working with scheduling a special meeting of the planning commission in August. We have secured the Performing Arts Center for a meeting of the planning commission on Wednesday, August 16th. So far, I've identified a quorum of commissioners that will be present or available for that, that meeting, so we're, we're pretty well-confirmed. The purpose of the special meeting will be to conduct a public hearing for the, the recommendation on the cannabis ordinance, and City Attorney Kate Cook will be present at that meeting and will, will represent that item. In addition to that item, we'll also be conducting a public hearing on a, the pre-zoning and annexation of the Renner parcel.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, we bring that, there had been some earlier information that we might try to do it on Tuesday, August 15th, but
That's what I had on my calendar.
Yeah, and, and, and that's what we were targeting, but the, the pieces just weren't coming together on the, on the 15th, so we're, we're going to try for the 16th.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And I plan on attending that meeting, you know, I'm sure we can have more than one council member sitting in the audience and, you know, just not being a participant in the meeting. Council direction for future agenda items? Before we adjourn, I, I received an email, and I, I think I forwarded it to most of the council from Ron Pavelka pertaining to a property of Blight that he had some concern for. So, I'd, I'd like to try and get Blight back on one of the subcommittees, and I'm not quite sure which one it should sit on. And I know we're doing a lot with code enforcement compared to what we used to do, but Ron brought up a couple of good points and a couple of good properties. So, what subcommittee, Paul, do you think that should be on?
Well, the, the natural place for it to go is Planning and Community Development.
Okay.
The secondary spot would be, what would be Finance Administration and Police, but I really think that the primary place would be Planning and Community Development, and we, we're, we are available to give any of the council members an update at any time on where we stand on code enforcement. We have, you know, we had a plan to try to bring in a contract code enforcement officer. It didn't work out, but David and Raphael, working through the police department, we are working our way through that list of 40 properties that we identified, and we are, you know, they're, they're continuing to, to keep up the letter-writing campaign, and they are getting results. There are some recalcitrant residents, but for the most part, the efforts do get results.
Good. Thank you. Carol, did you want to say something?
No, it's fine, thank you. I was just making notes.
I think Carol and I like Blight. Right?
Yeah. Blight's good.
Yeah, we're all over it.
Okay.
All right. We'd look forward to it.
Yeah, well, you know, you know what really annoyed me about that email that Ron sent, and, and if you had a chance to read it, it was the attitude that came through from the property owner towards not caring about what downtown Cloverdale looked like, and that property only doesn't even live in Cloverdale. So, that's really frustrating to me.
I think part of her problem is her frustration with the county and the fact that they don't ever seem to get around to closing down the detection wells on the property. And so, she feels, because I've had a couple of long talks with her, because it irritates the hell out of me, too, but she, her frustration level is intensely high because she can't get a clearance of any type on the property from the buried or gone wells now, but, I mean, gone tanks now. So, she's been informed by her attorney, from what I understand, that if she sells that property and someone tries to build on it or something, and if something happens, then they will be responsible. And so, she's very gun-shy there, and that's a couple of the blighted properties we have in town. That's a big problem, is the contamination that still exists.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, you know, and, and I'm sensitive to that, but on the other side of it is, it's, it's, it's hampering our ability to build our downtown, and it takes away, I think, from where we're trying to go as a city to bring that downtown to life when you have blighted properties just sitting there vacant. And what Ron was proposing was really just to put a few planters, some trees, kind of clean it up a little bit, make it look prettier than it does, and, and as a city, I think we have a responsibility to kind of not, if they won't do it cooperatively, then we need to move and require some things done. And we have codes in place that do that, and I think we just need to take a strong stance and make it happen, because it's just not okay to have a downtown, you know, right in the heart of our downtown. And there's a couple other ones I'm concerned with, and I did point out the, the gas station that just closed down up at the north end up there, and we have a big cardboard sign or wood sign that says "Close," and the pumps are sitting there, and, you know, it's a real blighted area anyway, and now it's going to go downhill, and we have the other one down by the railroad station that's just sitting there deteriorating. And it's time that we have to just step up and start making some stuff happen. It's just not okay, because it, it impacts all of us, our residents. I hear about it frequently from people that are just kind of like, why don't you do something about that? So, we need to do that.
Okay. That's, thank you. Without beating a dead horse, I know Dave, you're, and Paul, I know city staff is trying to get their arms around a lot of things, and, but this just came up, so I, I'd appreciate it being put on that subcommittee. Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and close the, adjourn the city council meeting to Tuesday, August the 8th, 5:30. We're going to have a closed session, and that closed session will be at City Hall. And as always, staff, thank you, and Linda, thank you, and we'll see you on
We'll see you on YouTube.
On the 8th. Okay.